And, we're singing along with the song. And ladies and gentlemen, a call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, November 5th, and Mr. Krupp will do our roll call.
Well, good morning Commissioners. We are joined here this morning with County Council, Stephen Madcorp, and our Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner, oh, no, Chair Ludlow.
Here. You all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Mary Rathke and I often commiserate about what kind of presentations we should have.
Well, we have two presentations.
And we have two, except for we have one before that, the presentation of Martha Schrader, who's walking in right now, so.
You lucky guys?
All right, Mr. Krupp, go ahead.
All righty, so our first presentation this morning is to recognize Veterans Day, which is coming up next week. I want to invite Erica Silver from our Veteran Services Program to come on up and present that to you.
Good morning Chair, good morning Commissioners, and I'd also like to call up Maureen Thompson and Jeff Jorgensen, and they are each gonna do a little part of this presentation. Let's see. How do I get it to show on this screen?
What's that?
How do I get it to show on this screen?
It will.
Okay. So first, just wanted to give some background, there's 316,000 veterans in Oregon, 34,380 in Clackamas County. We know that in our county workforce, there's veterans in every single level, every department. Veterans make a major impact on our county infrastructure and services. Unfortunately, the software that DES has right now can't total, so, right now, we don't know the total number of veterans that work for Clackamas County. We've got a lot of goals for veterans in Clackamas County. We want to make sure that employment, training, and educational opportunities are available so all veterans can earn living wage employment. We want to make sure we're offering every support to our returning veterans, easy access to VA benefits through the County Veteran Service Office. We want to also make sure that veteran families are supported before, during, and after deployment. We want to make sure that homeless veterans have all the service and support they need to regain stable housing. And we also want to make sure that there's a variety of housing models available to meet unique veteran needs. We've got a number of services and activities. As you know, we've got a very active Clackamas Veteran Service Office, and I'd like to invite Jeff Jorgensen to say a few words.
It's on.
That is on? Okay, thank you. Good morning Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Jorgensen, and I'm currently employed with Clackamas County as the County's Facility Manager. But I'm extremely proud to have served in the United States Navy for 22 years. I'm here today with many of the other county employees that have proudly served our country. Many of these men, women, and their families have sacrificed, endured separations, deployments, suffered injuries, and even long-term disabilities. And of course, many of us have known friends and shipmates that made the ultimate sacrifice so we could have the freedoms that we have today. Personally, I come from a fairly patriotic family, most of them being in the United States Army, myself being in the Navy, my brother in the Coast Guard, so we got harassed continuously. Currently, one of our sons is serving in the National Guard. My father had served in World War II in the Pacific and was wounded. My father-in-law was in Europe and was a POW for a period of time. And our daughter, son-in-law, and nephew all served in Iraq, in the Iraq conflict. Each of these members required some sort of medical treatment while in the service or after they departed the service. Personally, I'm a Gulf War combat vet and a disabled veteran. I was injured in an active-duty training accident while I was on active duty. These injuries actually caused me to become a paraplegic for a while, and I had to actually go to an Army hospital for surgeries to get me back up and running and then rehabilitation.
Wow.
That being said, I was able to return to active service and complete my 22 years, but my first contact with Clackamas County was after I got out in 2000. In 2001, I went to the Clackamas County Veteran Services Office and met Janice Raisel, where she helped me apply for the benefits from the VA. So I was not an employee at that time, but getting the services from the Veteran Services Office. They initially helped me get the benefits, apply to the VA, and later reapply and try to get the additional benefits later on for medical appointments and such, those services. Our Clackamas County Veteran Services was the critical link that helped me obtain many of those medical benefits to help get back to where I am today, not 100 percent. But the Veteran Service Office with Erica Silver, Janice Raisel, Tafoya, Gina Thomas, Heather Mywald, and several other groups, individuals, are those key links that help us get the veterans back into active life, jobs, homelessness affecting all the issues of veterans. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the Commissioners, the County, and H3S Administration, and all Veteran Service staff that helped the veterans of Clackamas County receive the vital services they require after they've concluded their service to the country. Thank you.
Jeff, one of the most impressive things for me is that after all this time, you still fit into that suit quite nicely.
Yeah.
That was amazing to me, too.
Max Woods does that occasionally, too, but congratulations on that. Questions, Commissioners, comments?
I just have a comment. You know, Jeff, I've been one of your fans, and I really enjoy talking with you and the work you do at the county, but it struck me as you rattled off all the names of your family members, the military really is family-friendly now, isn't it? Because you've instilled those values, and they've become family values, serving our country, and I want to thank you for that, it's very important.
Thank you.
See, our lights aren't working today.
Oh, they aren't?
Yeah, mine's on, too.
Uh-oh.
Yep, not working.
The Telefacilities Manager.
Oh, go ahead.
So I didn't know, is there still more to your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I wanted a question, but I didn't, I just thought it was kind of premature, so.
So I, I had mine on, too, but I just want to say, well, Jeff, first off, you're 100 percent for Clackamas County, so I really appreciate that. I also wanted to mention, Maureen, you're often overlooked in the services that you provide to veterans, and I appreciate you being here today. Thank you very much, and you're gonna say something, too.
Well, so Jeff, thank you so much for your kind words, and especially for your service. Our Clackamas Veteran Service Office is considered one of the highest functioning in the state. Last fiscal year, they met with over 2,000 clients, they filed 867 initial compensation claims, they had over 1,300 claims granted, and that's a 67 percent increase from the previous year, and they generated new federal monetary benefits of almost $9 million for our veterans here in Clackamas County. They've also increased the number of claims granted for Clackamas County each year by 167 percent. So it's really very impressive. Maureen's gonna talk about the Veterans Workforce Program at Community Solutions, another really important piece of what we offer.
Good morning Commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I'm pleased to be able to be included with Social Services on this day when we honor our veterans and we think about workforce as part of that service delivery in our county. You have some numbers up there on the County Veterans Workforce Program that you fund through the county. I won't go through each one of them, but I am pleased that about the 83 percent that become employed that come through the program, the jobs include construction, government, security, kind of got cut off there, public relations, manufacturing, and customer service. In terms of the veterans that we serve, I think it's important to know that this is a program for veterans who have considerable barriers to employment and are part of our vulnerable population. 22 percent of them are former offenders, 27 percent have a disability, 20 percent are on public assistance. In addition to that, we made 23 percent of our folks were referred for housing services. We did utilize two VASH vouchers, which we're very happy about. 35 percent were referred for physical services, including mental health services. 88 percent of the veterans that we served, we referred directly to the CVSO office, so we work very closely with that office. 40 percent of the veterans we served received transportation assistance in the form of either bus tickets or gas vouchers, especially for our veterans that live in rural Clackamas County. 13 percent received help with their utility payments, 10 percent received rent assistance. And finally, in terms of who we serve, in terms of their ages, 52 percent of the veterans that we served were between the ages of 30 and 49, and 38 percent were over the age of 55. So this is a unique population that has multiple barriers to employment, and the program, although it serves 40 individuals, which may not sound like a lot, it's very intensive and very intensive with case management and follow-up services. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your investment in workforce services for our veterans.
Commissioner Savis.
So what I did want to ask, and maybe, Erica, maybe it's for you, so the earlier stat you had on serving more people, the previous slide, my question was that when we added the third Veteran Service Officer, we got results. I know there's just been some staffing issues, and now probably it's coming together, and therefore the numbers are higher. And, you know, what I learned a long time ago, which prompted me to help that third, get that third position opened up, is we compared ourselves in population and VSOs to Lane County, the discovery was that they ended up with more, so it seemed more service officers, hence more benefits, but yet a smaller population. So do we still, is it, is it fair to assume that? Is it fair to assume that if we had one more VSO, we could provide more services and bring more benefits?
Absolutely.
Okay. So something that we ought to consider, my colleagues, is that, and the spreadsheet proves that out from, from the Veterans Office, what's?
Cameron.
Cameron, yeah, Cameron Smith. So he was up, he brought that, he brings that spreadsheet out to us, I think, believe, even at the District 8 meeting, and if you look at those numbers, there's a strong relationship between the staffing we have for our veterans in the VSO office to the benefits we bring back. So I think we can help our folks, because we have a larger population than Lane County, so I think that we can do even better.
Yeah, there's a high return on investment. I didn't do that calculation this year, but I'll do it next year.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for being here, and I want to thank Maureen, because we've worked on workforce together for years, and I'm still working on workforce, okay? But one of the things that this county has always pushed back on is the notion that workforce is not just for the folks who need a skill-up training, but when you talk about the wraparound services that some folks need, particularly veterans because of other various issues, that's an important component of workforce that the county offers. And as I continue to sit on that committee, we continue to make it clear that our human services capacities have a key, are a key component of making sure that folks that need more wraparound services get what they need so they can get skilled up and our veterans can get jobs. I just wanted to let folks know a few things that are going on, because it's been kind of fun. I just met with my first mayor yesterday on this issue, and that was Mayor Kent Studebaker of Lake Oswego. We've been working together with our Veterans Advisory Committee on a covenant, renewal of the covenant that we signed in 2009, to be signed in May of 2016 on the 50th, as part of the 50th anniversary celebration with Clackamas Community College. And that's important because Clackamas Community College innovated and has an Army-strong center there, thanks to General Kurt Loop and General Dan Hitchcock. And they've continued to be a champion. They are fundraising in February for their Military Family Endowment Fund. That is one of the first of its kind in the nation, because it not only gives scholarships to veterans, but also spouses and children. So they're trying to do the full-meal deal of supporting a family. One of the things that our Veterans Advisory Committee is working on is not only helping us to renew the covenant and go to our mayors and go to the other folks who signed the earlier covenant from 2009, it's also to come up with a work plan on specific issues where we're moving forward with tangible outcomes. The earliest conversations seem to indicate that our Veterans Advisory Committee is going to focus on housing, and veterans' housing, and what that means. One of the reasons right now that is critical is because we're having a housing deficit across the region, as you know, but also because our Human Services Department, our Housing Authority, is doing an inventory right now, what our housing is in the county, how we can actually up that inventory, and they're seeing this as a really good integrated effort between our veterans, you know, group and Human Services to see what they can do to help out with that. Our EDC does a similar thing when they go out to businesses. I think we're gonna have a very active year at the Veterans Advisory Committee as they focus on housing, and I've been proud, I've been privileged, I've been privileged to work with those folks on it, it's pretty exciting with that. Then I have one question. So at one point, I saw a beautiful exhibit of a soldier from Afghanistan who took beautiful pictures, and I asked to have that displayed as part of our art program here. Where, do we know where we are with that? Can we get?
Not from there.
No, you have to come up. Because they were stunning, I remember seeing it, they were absolutely stunning. It was moving.
Patty J., former Oregon Air National Guard, '79 to '86. So Sergeant Pete Kapool of Army National Guard, he's actually retiring this year. These photos were, I was enlightened that these photos were actually sitting in his closet, and he went to Afghanistan and took the photos, just kind of serendipitously, just kind of took them and then framed them and brought them back. And so when I was alerted by this, these photos, I had him part of the Traveling Vietnam, the Traveling Wall Memorial in Milwaukee, and it was very exciting, very well received. Well, my question was, he had applied to perhaps be in the county art gallery showing, but his decision is to, when he retires, is to gift these photos to each of his unit.
Oh, wow.
That's his final, final answer.
So we're not gonna have a display, but is there any place where we can see?
I can have a conversation with him about it to see if we could perhaps, because they are of the region, of the peoples that live there, it's a different view of Afghanistan that these photos really, that he wanted to show the world, you know, the people that saw it. So maybe you could help me encourage him to at least have maybe one more show before he does gift them? Is that appropriate?
Well, I'd like to, because they're so moving, they're like stunning pictures. It's, it's, it's like, it's like nothing you've ever seen, it brings the reality of the topography and the people and what it's like to serve there, and, and I think what he's doing, giving it to us, absolutely makes sense.
It is very touching, but.
But it's so, it would be so nice to have one last public acknowledgement of the work that he did, so.
You and I can do something offline, perhaps.
Okay.
Commissioner Schrader, thank you.
Thank you.
We've gone a bit astray, because Erica, evidently you're not done.
Just a few more.
Okay.
If you'd like to, I'll go through it quickly. So Commissioner Schrader was talking about housing, and there's been some wonderful work around veterans' housing over this last year through the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Toni Carter was not able to be here today, but she has led a wonderful effort. 30 formerly homeless veteran households have been provided with the VASH voucher. That gives them an ongoing rent subsidy as well as case management support. 15 more have been issued vouchers, and they're out looking for housing, and right now, there's only one more voucher remaining to be assigned. So that's a total of 46 VASH vouchers. Some of our other housing programs also support homeless veterans with those ongoing rent subsidies and case management support. As Commissioner Schrader had mentioned, we have a very active Veterans Advisory Committee, and the goal of that is to advise the board and staff on a wide range of veterans-related issues, making sure that Clackamas County remains responsive to the needs and concerns of our veterans. There's wide representation on that back, and most branches of service, as well as the Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan eras, are represented. So that's a really important group. We have some great activities over, that are planned. We have a new Veterans Rapid Rehousing and Landlord Outreach Program that the BCC is funding. I'm actually doing interviews for that position later today, so that'll add another 10 housing slots. Then we've, our Homeless Veteran Outreach Team with Tina Kennedy, who's here, and Mark Mooney, who's not, has identified and engaged with more than 140 homeless veterans. 12 are now housed with VASH vouchers, and that team has really become a critical part of our services here in Clackamas County, because they're just out there engaging with our most vulnerable veterans. If you heard some of the stories that I hear, it would just convince you even more of the importance of what this team is doing. Then we're also continuing outreach to veterans and their families in care facilities. Sometimes they're not aware of the extra benefits that they can get that can help them afford their needed level of care. Also, veterans are at double the risk of suicide as non-veterans, and that's a really important issue. We are sponsoring with, along with Behavioral Health, the Veterans Advisory Council, and the Returning Veterans Project. We have a suicide prevention training coming up on Monday, November 16th, right here at the DSB, so we'd love to see anybody here at that training. And we obviously have a lot more work to do around veterans' employment, the mental health stigma, the trauma that veterans experience, and homelessness. So we, in closing, we just encourage people to contact the Veteran Service Office and also to contact the Workforce Program, and the numbers for that, if you didn't catch it, are easily available on the Clackamas County website. In conclusion, just a huge thank you to all veterans for the incredible service and sacrifice that you provide to our country.
Commissioner Bernard.
I just wanted to also suggest, when it comes to budgets, that there be consideration of funding an outreach program to local elected officials, districts, and committees, because until I was elected to County Commission, I, as I was mayor, I had no idea what the county did, for veterans or for anything. And, and I had a, you know, at the time, a friend who was homeless vet, who worked part-time for our farmer's market and lived at the library on the porch out back, and until I got to the county, I had no idea. So I would say we need a Veterans Outreach Program to those people, too, and I appreciate that Martha's reaching out to folks in Lake Oswego. And I think using that covenant would be a really good education tool for cities and city councils, but it's also sewer districts and, and, you know, we have 70 advisory boards here. Reach out to all those people to make sure that we're reaching those people, especially, you know, even library boards, you know, nobody at the Lanning Library knew anything about Veteran Services, none of them. And, and yet they live at the library. They live often in the meeting rooms, they drop their stuff off during the day, and what do we do? We kick them out. And so I really think we need to do a better job in resolving that problem, too. So funding an outreach program to all those people would be really, really helpful, too. So when the budget time comes, I would be interested in looking at how we could fund a program like that.
Thank you.
Mary Rathke, our clerk, found something some time ago that she gave to me, and this isn't the first time I've read it, but I think it's particularly poignant when it comes to veterans. What is a veteran? Many of us have known a few veterans. Many things have been written about veterans. They are men and women who look the world in the eye, they feel an extra heart tug when the flag goes by, they step a little faster when they hear the beat of a military band. They are veterans. They are the doughboy of World War I, the GI, the GI of World War II. They have seen the Korean skies and fought the cold and silent battle of uneasy Berlin. They are veterans. They are sailors, soldiers, marines, they are flyers, CBs, the Coast Guard, they are veterans. They have the quiet dignity of a person who knows the price of freedom, they have the clear eyes of a person who respects themselves. They are the courage living on Main Street. They are patriotism, mowing the lawn on Saturday morning, they are good citizens, they have good citizenship with a smile on their faces, they are veterans. They are peacetime soldiers, peacetime leaders. They are the first to volunteer in times of trouble and the last to come home, they are veterans. The veteran is a first-class fighter with a quiet walk and a sentimental grin. They are America's most honored citizen, they are veterans. All veterans, please come forward, let's have a photo op.
Sounds, they look just like military, they stand back till they're older.
They want you to read it.
Well, we do. We have an opportunity to recognize our award-winning Sheriff's Office Marine Unit. I'm going to invite Deputy Adam Tingey up to the front dais here to present that to you. I understand we have a video that goes along with this.
Yeah, I read this in the newspaper, unfortunately, you know, we didn't get informed of this, but I saw it in the newspaper, and I said, we gotta have them come give us a little report here. Actually, I have viewed the video, it's very interesting. Welcome.
All right, well, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Adam Tingey, I'm a deputy sheriff with Clackamas County. I'm assigned to our Marine Patrol Unit and have been assigned there for the last two years. I took Sergeant Nate Thompson's place, who's back there, and I believe Lieutenant Phillips actually spent some time out on the water, too, and during his time. So, yeah, we were basically awarded a, there we go, we were awarded the Most Valuable Contribution Award to the state during our last postseason Oregon State Marine Board Conference. And what that is, is in October, we basically wrap up the year between fishing season, recreational boating season, and look at all the programs throughout the state, and we were fortunate we were to be recognized as having made the most valuable contribution to the state this year, so, and that is why I'm here. So I'll. So I'll explain that a little more to you. So what the award was specifically for, it was the promotion and improvement of the statewide personal watercraft program. So a personal watercraft, a PWC, a jet ski, whatever you may know it by. It's like a motorcycle out on the water, right? And it's, it's, historically has run into some issues as far as being seen more as a toy than a tool. But in the hands of a trained law enforcement officer, a Marine Patrol Officer, be it a state trooper or a deputy sheriff like ourselves, it's a, it's a tool that is just, it's highly valuable. So that is just one aspect of our, of our program. So down at the Marine Unit, we've got, you know, traditional jet boats that we run the river with. We've got these PWCs that we run the river with and conduct our patrol operations. Rafts and kayaks, and depending on the waterway, kind of depends on what vessel we're using that day to do our job. So a PWC, historically, it's been, it's been minimal use at best throughout the state and as well as ourselves. It's, it's a nice tool to have, but, well, let's face it, we live in the Northwest and the weather's not always smiling on you. So riding a PWC when it's raining or hailing, as we've experienced, even snowing, it's not very, you know, enjoyable. Doesn't make you want to go out and do more work. But it is a great tool nonetheless when it is available. So what we've tried to do is basically encourage the use of it. So we've had minimal use historically, poor public perception just because the first thing that conjures up in your mind is, is an image of somebody down at Meldrum Bar screaming across the river at, you know, seventy miles an hour between, you know, kids that are swimming and stuff. So there always hasn't been welcome. Even as Deputy Morgan Guthner, my cohort in this program and in this project, we've used it quite a bit contacting fishermen. And, and their first reaction to us is pretty uncertain because it's, you know, a deputy sheriff pulls up in a marked patrol boat, it's obvious that it's a law enforcement officer and, and it kind of sets the tone for the conversation. I pull up in a PWC or a jet ski, it doesn't show the same. So most people are, you know, a little cautious about who they're talking to until they realize, oh, it's a law enforcement officer. They're just on a new ride, right? So.
Can't wait to see the light bar that you'll develop for these guys.
Exactly, right, yeah. It still doesn't scream sheriff's office like the patrol boats, but it makes it clearly marked nonetheless. Like I said before, it's historically been seen more as a toy rather than a tool. There's really been no consistency in models or training out there. And that was the big thing for us, is there's never been any type of initial formal training that goes on. And as, just like a motorcycle, you know, you don't have the cover and the protection of a, of a car. And same with a PWC. You're on something that can go very fast on the water, yet you don't have that physical protection. So really, you're opening yourself up for liability issues. And not just that, we don't want to see our, our officers get hurt out there. So we were motivated basically to start this training program. And, and this is basically where it started out at. This was a video that Nate shot or that Sergeant Thompson helped put together earlier this year from one of our first classes that we did. We kind of, we took a curriculum from Idaho and kind of cut it and tailored it to how we could use it. And we started training people from Multnomah County, Columbia, Baker County, Clark County. We had folks from Spokane County, Washington, come down recently. And so we've been trying to spread this. And this was our first early on attempts, basically. Uh-oh, Nate, I think I screwed it up.
So I noticed you didn't mention light rail as a watercraft.
No. There we go.
Anytime we have an opportunity to actually go out, dedicate a day to going out, getting on the skis and practicing rescues and running in rough water, maneuvering, it's very good training for us. It's good to assist us as we go out and do our patrols. We're practicing not only with the jet skis, but also with the rescue board on the back so that we can contact folks and pull them onto the board. We're riding two and three on the jet ski so that we can pull up next to folks and grab them by the arm and get them in the back of the ski and have them board the ski. And so it's, it's very good training we're going to be able to utilize in the field.
That was good.
I thought it was a little cool that day.
It was, it was, I believe that was June or July, I can't remember what it said. But, and, and the great thing about doing this training in Clackamas, especially on the Willamette, is at the base of the falls, it's, you don't have another training location like that in the state. And not only that, it's, because you've got different degrees of how fast the water is moving. If you want less, the water not to move so fast, well, then you just move down river a little bit farther. If you want it to move, you know, a little quicker and be a more challenge, you just move up towards the bypass or the falls. And it's deep and it's safe and it's a safe area to train. And if you could measure the size of the eyes of the guys when they go up there for the first time and they look at what they're going to be running their, their jet skis and their PWCs in, it's, it's pretty amazing. But by the end of the day, their confidence and skill level has gone up so much. And a lot of these guys aren't going to be running their, or using their, their personal watercraft in swift-moving water. But the truth is, if they can control their, their craft competently in that scenario, then they can handle everything else, the most common daily tasks that they're going to run into during the course of their job. So being where we're at and being able to host classes like this, it's, it's a blessing, not only for ourselves because we improve our own skills, but then we're also sending people out there to the workforce that can safely do their job. So currently, the way that we use our, our skis, fishing season patrol, if you've been out on the Willamette during springer season, you know what the lake, or what the river looks like and how many hundreds of boats you can fit in between the Arch Bridge and 205 or down to Meldrum. It's amazing. And so getting a twenty-two, twenty-three foot boat in there and in and out of those, the boats, it can be a hassle, not only to us, but also to the, you know, the recreational users that are out there, the fishermen that are out there. So being able to do this job on a PWC, you can get in between every boat. I can talk to boats and they're, they're happy because I can fit in there and they don't have to pull up their fishing lines and we can have a conversation, I can do my safety checks with them. They can keep fishing, so they're happy. And so we're really making a good impact on them. You know, with a smaller craft like that, you've got very little water disturbance, so you're not throwing a big wake that's making people nauseous over time. And it's, the amount of fuel that you're saving with those things is huge because even though we're running two vessels, we're also doing twice the amount of work because where two people are operating in a single boat typically and conducting safety checks, you can only do one at a time. Now, when Deputy Guthner and myself go out there, we've got two vessels. We're doubling our, our time and we're spending less fuel on combined those, both of those vessels than we would with a single boat typically. So we also use them during the, the summer recreational boating season. And they're great for high-water rescue operations. And that's really what we've been pushing towards, especially with the Willamette Falls. There's areas up there where I don't frankly want to take a ninety thousand dollar boat and worry about having a catastrophic failure or something because some of that water, as you'll see, we've got a brief clip coming up of what that water can look like. Well, if I have a mishap with one of those, basically I just flush down river and I right my craft. I roll it back over, I get back on it, and I make a second attempt to get up there towards helping somebody if, if need be. So there's a lot of operational benefits, obviously, for that. They're, they're a fast and agile, quick-response craft. In the middle of doing boat checks at, just below 205, got flagged down by a guide who told me that somebody had just fallen off the dock up at Sport Craft trying to launch his boat. And, you know, within five seconds on a ski, I can zip through ten boats and I can get right to where he was without, you know, putting anybody else in danger. It's a great tool for that. As I mentioned, access to more challenging water, i.e. the Willamette Falls area. Increased productivity, like we mentioned. And it always, it's good to keep your, your fishing traffic happy with, when you're out there because, well, they're enjoying our areas and, and having a good relationship between law enforcement and those recreational users are, it's a huge benefit to us. So cost benefits, right? It's, it's a reduced impact on the initial purchase. You know, you're looking at, the, the top-end product would be fifteen thousand dollars. Compare that to a boat that you're using for about the same amount of time and it's going to be, you know, three, four times that. And the fuel savings is, is huge with what we're using out there. So leading the charge, as I mentioned, we're kind of, kind of leading the spear as far as taking this training to the next level. We just brought the first instructor development course for law enforcement to Oregon, and that was actually last week. And so this is a brief little video on what our training looks like now. And again, this was a four-day class that we, that we did on the Willamette. So again, that, that was only about a minute, twenty seconds over the thirty-two hours that we were up using those. But the skill level again, as, you know, when we were excited about where this is going to continue to go and from when we were just figuring things out ourselves, like in our June, July classes, compared to where we had somebody come up, a professional instructor come up who's been running these for twenty-five years from California and he's CAL FIRE certified, the only curriculum that's certified by the state, came up and gave us this four-day class and to see where it's progressing. You know, not only are we able to operate the crafts in a more safer fashion and more, you know, and, and just being able to use them better, but we're also being able to push that out from Clackamas County out towards other members of the state. And, and Washington has been, you know, kind of chasing us down, trying to get us to help teach a lot of their stuff too. So that's where, that's basically where we're at. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for your, your continued support for our programs. I know that the Marine Unit and the waterways are very important to you guys and we do our best to try to keep them safe, try to keep the Clackamas enjoyable and the Willamette and everything as well. So if you guys have any questions or...
That's an interesting sled that you had back there. Reminds me of the stuff they have in Hawaii to do something similar for the surfers.
And it's exactly the same product, basically. The, it extends your rescue platform. It's a lot easier for me to get somebody to climb up on that sled, that rescue sled, than it is to have them get on the back of the ski. As you could see, when you get two, three people on the back of those skis, they're not the most stable platforms. And sometimes you do go sideways and, and tip over. But when you have somebody on a sled, especially an unconscious victim, a lot of times we were doing unconscious passive victims and being able to get them on there, it really opens up just a, a lot more opportunities for rescue and helping people out, so.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I had no idea we had some PWCs. So how many do we have now on our fleet?
So we have two.
Two, great. I, I could see where that'd come in handy. I remember that, we were doing that alcohol ban tour on the river and we did that one rescue that one day that we had to pull someone in the boat. And that was difficult.
Yeah.
So I could see where this would be much easier. So I don't know how much, you, you tend to deploy them on the carver area as well or during the summertime?
You could, and in the summertime, the hard part is, is they're, they're not going to be a very, I don't know, a shallow water craft. Not ideally. They suck a lot of sediment and rocks and debris up and so you can get yourself in trouble. On the Clackamas, when the water's a little higher, you could definitely use them. You could deploy them in certain areas and, and stay within, you know, deeper sections of the river on the Clackamas, for sure. Because they're great to deploy a swimmer or somebody that's doing a surface search for a missing person off of, so.
Adam, that was a great presentation. You, you're almost like a skilled politician up there doing your job.
Well, thank you.
Well, we had our military and now we had a paramilitary. So I think we should get, have our CCSO people come forward, have a picture.
I'm already up here, so I won't object.
So when do we get a chance to go river rescue with, with you guys on that?
Where's you guys' major award?
I haven't seen the physical award yet, so.
And now we're into Citizens Communication. I'll call a few people up. And they are Mac Woods and Les Poole.
Good morning, Les Poole. Chair Ledlow, you're right, that, those were a couple of really good presentations. And I look forward to the, to the Commissioners volunteering for a ride-along on the back of one of those up there. I used to wonder what that boathouse was at Clackamas Cove. And, and that's obviously where they operate out of. So a couple of really good presentations and...
They moved, Les.
Yeah, they moved at one point, but...
No, they're, they're not in the cove anymore.
They're gone? The way things are going, the cove will be gone pretty soon. But again, you know, we've got to think about safety. And one of the things that I noticed there about the perception of the watercraft was, how was it described? No real training. Sounds like bicyclists. We got the same problem. No initial training. People just buy one, they jump on it, and away they go. I've spoken repeatedly and there's an issue that's become more and more and more important to everyone in the community, regardless of what your politics are or what your income level is. And that's planning for the community, planning for the county, I should say. We're short on land for industrial growth and job creation. We're still mired down under Metro's thumb. And yes, we are indeed operating under Metro's thumb. I'm pleased that the county is seeking some flexibility in dealing with how we're going to plan and fix the fiasco that went on with the urban growth expansion, the urban reserves planning, millions of dollars that went down the drain in, in a lawsuit. And now it's been remanded, which simply means we're redoing it. And hopefully, we can have a discussion item or something on the agenda soon so the public gets a better idea of what's going on here and why is the county doing what they're doing? And why is Metro holding their, you know, holding this, this narrow vision of what this county and what the region could aspire to? We really need more input on that. I've got a lot of background in land use and planning, so I understand what's going on there. But I think the general public needs to understand the effect it's having, having this layer of government that is too inclined to do things one-size-fits-all. inclined to do things one size fits all. And the reason we're seeing so many houses torn down and the reason neighborhoods are being disrupted is that it's not just those terrible greedy developers, of which they're not all terrible and greedy, that's just a convenient label for them. It's about how the government is operating and mandating things. And Portland is a poorly-run city and I think you're all going to see that over time. I really do. So, let's not follow Portland's model. Let's get away from that. We're not going to overthrow the Oregon Land Use Plan. I'm not asking anyone here to create a willy-nilly approach. But we've got to stay after this issue. Our future's at stake. And the more jobs that are out of the county, the more we're driving or writing or getting to jobs that should be here. So, let's stay after that. And if we could get something on the agenda and continue the outreach with that, it would be great. It really would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Ludlow and commissioners, I am MacArthur Woods. I live in Clackamas County between Oregon City and Canby. I pay a lot of taxes. I am a veteran. I was Jeff Jorgensen's Navy recruiter. I knew him before anybody else when he was a teenager. I put him into the Navy. You can talk to him more in private about me and what I did for him. We have a problem in Clackamas County. It's called debt and taxes. The big problem is taxes. And I'm not wearing my uniform today. I may come in uniform next week because you don't complain in uniform. And I'm a veteran that's got reason to complain about the cotton-picking politicians in Oregon all over the state and it's probably worse in Clackamas and Multnomah County than anywhere else. You need to know that. As a veteran, we had one speaking last week that can't even use his arms. There's other veterans with legs and big problems, disabled veterans. When the veterans disability started sixty years ago in nineteen fifty-five, a veteran forty percent or more disabled was not paying one-dollar taxes. They were exempt based on the price of a home that they were living in at that time. The man that was speaking is having some real, last week, having real difficulties paying his taxes even though he's very disabled because the cotton-picking politicians won't do anything to help the veterans. And that's why I'm complaining. You need to know that. Politicians all over the state need to know it. Take it back to where, what the exemption qualified for sixty years ago as they want more money. The man sitting right here last week talking got fifteen dollars and thirty cents off of his taxes while he's paying almost five-thousand dollars taxes and unable to work. They need to open their eyes. Talk is cheap. What you produce is not so cheap. But the politicians are not wailing to get out there and do anything for the veterans when they play politics. And like Tyrone Woods, the veteran Navy SEAL, part of my family, that was wiped out in Benghazi. Well, the guy here last week may be a homeless veteran before too long because he can't pay his cotton-picking taxes because the politicians won't do anything about it. And if it sounds like I'm complaining, yes, I'm complaining. And I'm a veteran over twenty years. Three trips to Vietnam myself, I know what it's all about. We lost five guys on one trip in Vietnam. With that, Chair Ludlow, I'd like to ask you to read this about the veteran. Thank you.
Well...
Unless you have a comment or question.
Oh.
Mac, I'll take that.
Thank you.
I'll make sure they get copies.
Well, that, Mac, you've shared that with us before and it is...
You're doing a good job.
Let me finish. Let me finish. You took something that was formerly written and you added to it.
Yes, sir, I did. Because it includes politicians. Thank you. Please acknowledge.
And you were at the same meeting I was at last night. We know Clackamas County's in a mess.
Yes. I'm not going to read it into the record right now.
Well, you want me to read it?
Your three minutes is up, Mac.
No, that's how you guys treat veterans. Thank you. That's a dead giveaway. And the election's coming. A year from now, there's going to be some politicians that don't have jobs.
Any of the commissioners want to read this into the record?
This whole thing?
No, no, no. That's something completely different.
But we do have that other citizen.
Give me this thing. All right, Mac. You know, we've just had almost a celebration here about our feelings for veterans. And it's darn sad when you demean us and throw us under the bus because we don't do exactly what you think we should be doing or we should be saying. So, and you can go ahead and talk, but I'm not going to recognize you any longer. Now, I will go ahead and read this, but again, I emphasize, you wrote a portion of this. You don't give any credit to the person that actually wrote the upper portion, which concerns me. "The Veteran. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us the freedom to demonstrate. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the freedom to vote." And then, under politician, "It is a politician, not the veteran, who has given them the right to walk on us. It is a politician, not the veteran, who has given some the freedom to burn our flag. It is a politician, not the veteran, who has taken our rights and our constitution to sacrifice. It is the veteran who salutes the flag and serves beneath the flag and whose coffin is draped by the flag. Mac Woods." Again, my emphasis is, Mac, anytime you want this kind of thing read in the future, you come forward and read it into the record. But to throw us under the bus and say that we don't care about veterans simply because we don't read something that was really credited to somebody else that you added to is unfair. Now, the next person is Jonathan Todd. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Todd and I've been a Clackamas County resident for sixteen years. I'm here today to report that I'm not being allowed to use my property in a way that is an outright permitted use according to the zone in which I live, which is RRFF five. According to Zoning and Development Ordinance 316, I believe I should be able to have a decorative pond as well as walking trails on my property. However, Planning refuses to issue to the Oregon Department of Water Resources a statement saying so. When the Board of Commissioners legislatively decides a use is permitted outright as it is done in Ordinance 316, it is completely inappropriate for Planning to impose a wholly inapplicable requirement turning a permitted outright use into a prohibited use because county planning is powerful enough to do things like that. I am seeking your help to instruct Planning that it must abide by its own code and must advise Oregon Department of Water Resources that my pond and walking trails on my property are outright permitted uses because that is what the code expressly says. The fact that county is wasting taxpayer dollars and citizen resources by refusing to recognize its own code and insisting on obtaining a Luba order that restates the county code is wasteful and very expensive litigation. Here is what Planning is spending all this time and money on. Last year, I removed a fair amount of invasive blackberries and Scotch broom plants. I do have a photo that shows a small side view of the area. However, I was not in the habit of taking pictures of blackberry infestations. I do have a report from a licensed arboriculture consultant that states the plants were there. You can also look next door to see the same infestation that still exists. After the invasives were removed, which I believe is actually encouraged by the Clackamas County ordinances, I replanted the area with native grasses in an effort to choke out the invasives and their harmful effects. I have pictures of that as well. The property had an existing pond structure from previous landowner, tigered sand and gravel. This area was also covered in blackberries. I replaced a standpipe that was believed to have been in place in order to collect water runoff into a reservoir that currently has the blessings of Oregon Department of Water Resources as well as the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. By replacing the standpipe, the reservoir has been restored. I have a professional opinion from a licensed wildlife habitat consultant that has experienced with my property over the last two decades. Dr. Schott's report clearly states that the reservoir provides year-round water source for the habitat and is a net benefit for the wildlife and native vegetation. The Planning Department has a copy of the report in its possession. The fact that we are headed to Luba seems like a significant waste of citizen money and county employee time. Every Clackamas County resident that I've shown the property to cannot believe that, first, that there's an issue whatsoever, and second, that their money is being used to disallow it. There's an abundance of wildlife on the property compared to years past. The reservoir has become essentially a habitat sanctuary where the animals are protected and undisturbed by cars.
Go ahead.
And even people for the most part. Animals that I personally witnessed use the area are the following: deer, beaver, duck, nutria, crane, skunk, squirrel, coyote, geese, bats, snakes, moles, newts, and birds of many kind. Just this morning, there were four ducks sitting on the pond. Does the county really want to disallow this type of habitat sanctuary? In several other instances within our county, the county actually contributes to the cost of creating such habitats. Last thing I will mention, there's a permanent application that has already gone through the sixty-day public notice process with the state of Oregon. There was not a single comment during the notice period. The state is willing to approve the reservoir application once the county says they are okay with the use, which I am thinking should be okay since it appears to be a permitted use according to Table 316-1. The county has signed off on many other of the same uses over the years. Even the state representative with the Oregon Department of Water Resource Department states that he's never seen a stance like this before. Thank you for your time. I can be reached at any time for follow-up.
Jonathan, you reached out to me and will point out that, not to point out our age difference, but my wife went to school with, or my daughter went to school with your wife.
Correct.
You know, the, I visited your site. I saw the ducks. I saw what you've done with the property, which is definitely to remove non-indigenous vegetation for sure. The pictures are very, very telling as far as what you have now versus what your neighbor still has. Somebody turned you in and said you created the dam and the trees on that dam would tell you you did not create that dam. The standpipe was used, like you said, by previous operations in that area. And you're right. A lot of times, we do mitigations and we create and more defined wetlands. What was explained to me by the Planning Director is that that was a Gold Five stream and that being that, it was like untouchable. Certainly, you have improved the property from what it used to be and I find no offense to this. Now, the problem is, as a commissioner, we have no say. We have, we have the ask. We can go ask our planning people about this and certainly hear their side of the story. But the commission actually has no authority to render decision or to push our staff towards rendering a particular decision. Again, my emphasis is, I see no problem with what you've done up there and it's really beautiful and it's functional for the wildlife, which you've spoken of. So, you know, the commission's kind of in a strange situation here. There's not much we can do. We can certainly hear what you have to say. We can even agree with what you have to say. But my understanding is that if you want to appeal their decision, you have to go through the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is arduous and costly and time-consuming. But right now, again, you're almost a neighbor to me. I really like your property and I think you've done great things, but we're kind of stuck here.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
There is, on my tax map that is published by the Clackamas County Sea Map Program, the map, there's no stream on my property. There, this stream shows up in a group of maps that is at the Planning Department that is not known by any of the citizens of Clackamas County. I mean, this is not a published, there's not on the website. It doesn't say, hey, come see this extra set of maps that we have. When I go to my tax map, there is not a stream on the property. So, I'm not, I'm, there's a disagreement there on whether there is or not. And how am I supposed to know if I go to the tax map and there's nothing there to show me a stream? So...
Well, oftentimes, being a real estate broker for some forty years in that same area, you know, when they take, and they produce these maps, a tax map is completely different than topographical map. And oftentimes, they have a tendency to mark the bottom of a swale or ravine with an intermittent line, which means it's an intermittent stream. I did see one map where that existed on the property. I think right now, the majority of that water flow is actually underground that feeds your pond, correct?
Well, during the winter time, it's rain that's coming down from everywhere. So...
But it replenishes itself during the summertime as well?
It does.
And I don't see a lively, like lively stream there. So, it must be...
Correct. The stream that Planning talks of is dry from May until November.
All right. Commissioners, any further comments on this matter?
Oh, I think you should be allowed to do this. I think, I would like to see our Planning Department become a little bit more cheerleaders to the needs of the people and not be putting them through the wringer on whether they're applying for permits or trying to continue the use of this property, which I think is wholly acceptable. And I get a lot of complaints like this on land use. And it's probably more complaints than I get with anything else. I think our government needs to be more receptive to the people who pay their taxes and pay their ability and make them able to do the job and not be so overbearing.
Commissioner Savas.
I appreciate you bringing this forward. I had, just learning of this right now. So, I, and I think Commissioner Ludlow is correct that the fact that it's at the Luba level, there's nothing we can do. It's now out of our hands. But had we perhaps learned of this earlier, I'm not saying we could have done anything or not, but I certainly will look at, I'm curious as to how or what the particulars are. And you've explained some of that, but I mean, want to hear our staff's point of view on this as well to figure out how or why, you know, this has come about. It's sad and I think it really brings the light. It's a very delicate issue in the sense that of trying to balance this out, but you know, really about code enforcement, you were turned in and probably code enforcement sounds like. You must be an unincorporated Clackamas County, not a Willseville?
Unincorporated and the code, the complaint was false. The complaint was they built a dam, which I did not. There's eighty-foot trees on it and I was riding jet skis on a pond, which I don't own jet skis.
Ah, possible.
So, yes, there was a code comment, but...
Yeah. And my issue particularly, and I'm more talking to my fellow colleagues, is that, you know, the, you know, we talked about should one complaint trigger an action? What priority of problems is there? You know, are there other higher priorities? Because we have a backlog and we are throwing a lot of resources at code enforcement. And should there be, really be a priority basis for problems that are actually real, tangible, that are actually affecting people's quality of life versus ones that are, maybe there's no victim here, let's say. So, I'll look into this myself and I, I'm sorry that it's come to this level and you're going through Luba because that's not cheap and that's not cheap to defend if you're the citizen. So, I'll look into it, but I think it kind of, what I want to just draw out of this is that, you know, what rises to the level, what priorities can we do to make sure that our, the limited amount of resources we have in code enforcement is put towards issues where there really is a real problem and a real victim perhaps or a situation. But is there a victim here at all, in your opinion?
Well, the victim will, well...
Other than yourself, yeah.
If this pond is forced to go away, then all the animals that are around the area are going to have to go fend for themselves somewhere else. Right now, it is literally a sanctuary. I welcome any of you out there to see it. I've given you a few pictures, but it's a sanctuary for these animals to hang out. I mean, there's Newland, Stafford, Homesteaders, and Eastgate that are kind of like four well-traveled roads in this three-hundred-acre area or whatever. And, and there's a big power line that kind of goes down the middle and that's where these animals of all types, coyotes for sure, I heard those just the other day, reside and kind of are away from the traffic. So, when you talk about a victim, is there a human victim? I don't know of any human victim that this causes a problem to. The state of Oregon is willing to provide a permit for the reservoir. I've already gone through the process. So, I cannot, and during that public comment period, there was not a, not a mention. So, I don't know who would be a victim under its current situation. If it's, if it has to go away, then yeah, I would think that now the animals have got to pick up and go somewhere else. So...
So, do you know who the complaintant was?
It was someone to the, to the south of me that is not a fan of Clackamas County government, is what I've been told by the state. Like, they make, they make comments on anything they can find to bring up comments to that makes sense.
I'll talk to you offline. I'll talk to you offline.
Yeah. And I would say, we, it is, we are going through the process, and both sides are spending money, so I'm spending my own. I'm fine with that, to protect the habitat. Everyone else in this room that's a Clackamas County resident is spending their money trying to disallow this. It's not in Luba's hands yet. It's still in the county's hands.
Okay.
But we're pretty close there, so...
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate you coming forward today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on agenda is the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. The Consent Agenda under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of Contract 30732 CC with Ride Connection to Provide Funding for Rides Provided by Members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, we have Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro to Implement Fiscal Year 20, oh, that's a misprint, 2015-2016, Year 26 Annual Waste Reduction and Recycle Program. Under the Department of Emergency Management, Approval of Fiscal Year 2015 Home, State Homeland Security Grant Program Agreements with the State of Oregon for Emergency Management Training, Community Emergency Response Team CERT Program, and Completion of the Clackamas County Medical Examiner's Regional Response Team Exercise. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under our Development Agency, Approval of a Funding Agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Development Agency to Cover Additional Debt Services on the Brooks Building. And Underwater Environment Services, Approval of a Construction Contract Between Tri-City Service District and Bodie Construction, Inc., for the Willamette Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, you want to remove any of these, discuss them? All right, entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Schrader with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second. Further discussion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye. Passes 5-0. And now, the county administrator update.
Yes, so I have a few items to share with you, all good news. And as you know, the Planning Commission held a public hearing about draft marijuana land use regulations. It was convened on October the 26th, but was carried over to this past Monday because of what was a significant turnout. There were more than 400 people who came out on the first night with over 100 signups to provide testimony, requiring a second night of testimony for that. I'm bringing this up because of the kind of transparent process and the accessibility of doing this is exactly what our performance Clackamas strategic priorities is all about in the area of building public trust through good government. We, I think the staff did an excellent job of managing what was a very challenging proposition in front of them with a very large crowd and ensuring that everybody who had an interest in being able to speak was able to speak. And so, we certainly appreciate all of the members of the public who turned out and participated. We are also expecting another high turnout on Monday, November the 23rd, in this hearing room before the Board of County Commissioners, when you hold your own public hearing on these draft regulations. And we will have appropriate arrangements made here in the building to assure that we're able to provide access and an opportunity to participate on the part of everybody who may show up that day for that particular hearing. Anyone who's interested in getting information about this can visit our front page of our website at www.clackamas.us. And I also wanted to let you know that we recently conducted a survey of customers in our Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District Number One, the districts that provide wastewater treatment services, serving a population of about 150,000 people. And that, that survey reveals that about 94% of our customers feel that the service they receive is either good or very good. That's a remarkable result of that, and I think it's a very high and unusual rating for a utility. I just want to say, keep it up to our staff at Water Environment Services. That's really a lot of good news, I think, on the part of the hard work that they do for us. Then, last week, I wanted to let you know that I hosted my second lunch and learn event where we buy pizza, including anchovy pizza, and we invite Clackamas County employees to join us to talk about the two transformative initiatives that are underway here at Clackamas County, our core values and Performance Clackamas. And as was the case before, we had more employees trying to reserve spots to participate than we could accommodate. I should note, these events are entirely voluntary. Employees attend them on their own personal time during the lunch hour. I've had more than 100 total employees who've joined me for this to learn about our core values and Performance Clackamas. My goal is, is that I will have an opportunity in scheduling these out over time in different locations throughout the county facilities, that I will have an opportunity to meet and share information about these initiatives with virtually every employee in our county workforce. So, I'm real happy with the response that we're getting with that. I have one other little piece of information to share with you. This was, I had a meeting last week with the presiding Judge, Judge Herndon, and representatives from the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office, the Corrections and Community Corrections Group of the County Sheriff's Office. They have been involved in working on an effort relating to what we call forced releases, when you need to release people from the county jail because there isn't room for the parties that are there. And it's been a very active work group. County Administration has been involved with that effort since the beginning, but they wanted to share with me a very interesting idea. I mean, one of the problems we have is dealing with those individuals who fail to appear, and when they do, a warrant gets issued for their arrest, and then they end up taking up a bed in the county jail. And of course, the cost of dealing with each individual who fails to appear is over $550 each to the public when that occurs. Well, what, they did a little bit of research, and they learned that a particular telephone reminder system, at a cost of a little more than $10,000 a year, will reduce the problem we're having with failure to appears by anywhere from 20 to 40%. And that adds up to significant savings to the county, both in terms of the cost of processing those warrants as well as having an individual occupy a bed. They found that in other locations, simply by having this telephonic reminder system, that people tend to follow up, arrive in court, and respond to the request. So, the number of failure to appears drops significantly. And we're talking about a population of over 3,000 individuals that this affects on an annual basis. So, it's significant. It's another work product of a collaboration between the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney, the courts, and county administration, and we're real happy to learn about it. Wanted to share it with you. That's my report.
Thank you. And time for a Commissioner's communication. We'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, that I met with Mayor Sudabaker the other day, and he is on board with our, with our piece that we're going to be doing with Clackamas Community College. One of the things I found out about him, he is a Marine, and I think people mostly know that the movie American Sniper was based on the life of his son-in-law. And so, he has basically not only served the country, but has suffered a tragic loss on behalf of his country in many ways. So, that was a good meeting. My next mayor I'm going to be talking to is Mayor Lori DeReemer, and they're important because Happy Valley has Camp Withacum under its umbrella. And they do quite a bit of work with the National Guard, including a big event every summer where they honor our military and our veterans. So, I'm looking forward to that conversation. I'd like to bring up some information about arts and culture activities in the county.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
You have the paper.
There we go. It's up, yeah. Okay. So, first thing is, Lakewood Theater Company presents Present Laughter. Set in the glamorous world of theater, Present Laughter is a gloriously witty portrait of 1930s thespian life. Friday and Saturday, November 6th and 7th at 7:30 PM, and Sunday, November 8th at 7:00 PM at the Lakewood Center for the Arts. It's a great play. I serve on their board, and I enjoy every minute of that. The Spiral Gallery, first Friday, featuring Wrapped Again: Fiber Arts by Annette Resbek, Friday, November 6th, 6:00 to 8:30 PM at the Spiral Gallery in Estacada. For more information about any of these events, you can go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. So, that's what's going on in the county this week for arts and culture. Finally, I also would like to give a shout-out before I, we move on to another Commissioner, to the Clackamas Community College Veteran Services. They are proud to serve their veterans. They basically have a room dedicated specifically for veterans to go to to get information about scholarships, benefits, education and career information, referrals to resources, and VA enrollment and progress certification. That room is Room Number 100 in the Bill Abroad Community Center. So, veterans and their families that want to have continuing education opportunities can go to that center and get the information they need. The other piece, kind of dealing with veterans, I want to remind folks that the Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition is starting, is having its 10th anniversary this year on Veterans Day, November 11th. And that was a project we started back here in Clackamas County when I was first here, where we incubated a manufacturing group of this sort that now has become a by-state, tri-state force to be reckoned with in terms of helping our manufacturers get what they need. So, they're going to be there. They are going to have military personnel there because they work very closely with the military and the businesses in order to see what kinds of needs that they can meet and products they can produce for the safety of our service members. So, that's kind of a fun thing, too, that's somewhat related, and I guess with that, that's the news from Lake Walbe. Okay?
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Well, I was kind of want to just touch on what our administrator just spoke to a little bit, and that was our attendance at our recent marijuana meetings before the Planning Commission. And, you know, what, one of the things that drove me to this position of a county commissioner was, you know, monies, governments, you know, waste, waste of government, and, you know, sometimes we implement programs to maybe achieve something that, whereby the goal might be to perhaps have some revenue, and then sometimes that administrative cost over, exceeds that and causes us to actually be in the negative. And my concern about after hearing all this testimony and hearing some of these things I had no idea were occurring out there in Clackamas County, that our code enforcement, as I spoke of earlier, is tasked with more work and more complaints than they have an opportunity to address. And quality of life is important. Health, life, safety issues are obviously of a higher, higher priority not to be addressed first, but a prioritization of what we address. But I'm concerned that the cost to administrate this thing, regardless of whether you look at the, perhaps the abuse side of it from a public safety standpoint with marijuana, or it is land use battles, or it is challenging the regulations we seem to be willing to incur, I'm not sure we can actually afford this. And it seems to me that this is a situation that we ought to have some financial analysis of what it's going to cost if we go down this path to tax it, to regulate it, and then to litigate that, all of the regulations that perhaps we might pass here in the near future, which I think we ought to have some kind of an estimate of what that cost is going to be. We haven't done that. And I would, and therefore, I think it's even more important to look at the alternative and ask the voters if that is a higher cost and that it will be tax revenue that we receive, that maybe that's another reason to look at having it put to the voters specifically designed by House Bill 3400 that we have an option to opt out on certain aspects of that, that would be the most expensive aspects of this marijuana initiative. So, I'm concerned about the cost, and I, I'm just, it's looking more and more every day, and especially after the testimony that I heard firsthand, that it's going to be a burden, a financial burden to this county to tax it, to regulate it, and to litigate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This board, many of us, including myself, had an opportunity to tour a brand-new business to Clackamas County out on Highway 212. It's called Pico Astronics, and it's an aeronautical manufacturing firm for Boeing, Boeing Jet parts. It's very interesting. They make all the plastic parts there through a process, and it's one of the cleanest, most technical places I've seen. It really dispels the myth about the dirty, crummy manufacturing processes. You could eat off the floor. It was so nice. And they provide family wage jobs. They are so happy to be out of Portland and be into Clackamas County. They just almost jumped up and down and invited us all out for a reception with wonderful food, and I was very, very pleased that they are now located in Clackamas County. And as you may know, that Ellen Crawford, our Director of Juvenile Justice, retired. We had a reception for her. She'll be retiring soon, and that's a sad, sad deal because she is a real believer in second chances for our youth who are somehow misbehaved, caught in a system, and are given an opportunity to turn their lives around through care, discipline, and tasks to perform to put them on a path to constructive life. And I really appreciated her, and that ties in with a reception that board members attended, myself and a few board members, at the Parrott Creek Ranch was an awards presentation for volunteer members. Parrott Creek Ranch is located out south Clackamas County on an acreage, and it's a place for more of our youth to attend in a program, a residential onsite program to correct their ill ways and give them a chance to do something good for society and the rest of their lives. And we're believers in trying to teach our youth to be leaders and productive citizens. So, we had some good opportunities this week for that. And I'd like to read something. Governor Kate Brown recently declared November as Mediation Month in Oregon. National Conflict Resolution Day was celebrated on October 18th. Here in Clackamas County, we provide conflict resolution services throughout the year. In recognition of Mediation Month, please be aware that Clackamas County Resolution Services provides mediation, facilitation, relationship coaching, and education and training in a variety of service areas, and these include, but not limited to, family law mediation and relationship coaching, neighbor-to-neighbor and other community dispute resolution services, foreclosure avoidance program facilitation, small claims mediation, workplace mediation and meeting facilities, facilitation services, parent education classes and family law clinics, victim offender dialogue facilitation for the Clackamas County Juvenile Department. Families and individuals benefit from learning effective conflict management skills, which result in enhanced safety and more respectful relationships at home in your communities. You can check this out at www.clackamas.us/CCRS/. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
So, I had an opportunity to use a personal watercraft once in the South Pacific, and the guy said that my training was, "Don't hit the reef." Five seconds later, I hit the reef, popped the propeller off.
Oh.
Had to push it back in, and they don't let you get it again, so. Bike training, you know, I, somebody mentioned that bicyclists are not trained. I was trained at a very early age when I couldn't hardly reach the pedals, and as a young adult, trained a lot of my neighbor kids to ride their bikes along with tying their shoes. And I often say that, "I'm sorry they took that training because my shoes are always coming untied." We had the Stafford discussion the other day with Mayor's Metro. I thought it was very good. I see some possibilities. A lot of challenges ahead, but I thought if there's one thing it was, it was an opportunity to build relationships, and I, I really felt that we did. And continuing... And continuing to build those relationships will be key in the future. I went to the Portland Business Alliance banquet. I know Martha was there, Paul. I don't know if you actually made it. But I had an opportunity to sit with C H Two M Hill, which, they're a very different group. They do everything. Switch Treatment Plants, and our former administrator, John Mantey, works for C H Two M Hill on contract to do county management around, you know, the south, Georgia, and various places. Very different. We talked about the work they do, which is almost strictly with Intel. They have a huge staff that's always building clean rooms, which is what you mentioned. Clean rooms, and they, they've been doing this for years at the same facility, because technology changes. I sat at a table about five engineers, as well as the local office manager, he called himself, which is, he's, he has a huge job. Attended the Parrot Creek event, and you mentioned second chance. I think that Parrot Creek is just a, a great example of the hard work and partnership that Clackamas County has had in the future. Many years ago, the voters voted to fund this facility, and Measure Five or Fifty kind of rolled it into the general fund, and were constantly trying to resolve this. We had a great discussion about what we could do in the future to resolve our relationship with Parrot Creek, which we're often required to do a lot of maintenance work when that facility is, you know, very old and falling apart, frankly. And someday, I'd like to see it off our books. And that's going to require a commitment on both our parts to not only raise the money, but to invest. We also had a lengthy discussion about the Extension Service Center, which I thought was very valuable. It also showed our commitment to the Family Justice Center, and to make sure we include that in any future plans, not only for that piece of property, but for the Red Soils Facility. Want to congratulate Wilda Parks for being elected to Milwaukee City Council. She's, did she say she had?
Ninety-two.
What? I wasn't asking her age.
That's not very nice, because that's not.
Ninety-two percent, which is incredible. Of course, there was nobody else running. But she's, she has, I forget what she said, three times she's been, had to run for election for Milwaukee City Council in one year. And so, that's pretty incredible. And she also has served in more capacities on Milwaukee City Council than most people ever have. Also want to congratulate, something that is important to me, is the Cambie Rural Fire District for passing their measure. Clackamas County, there are a bunch of positive measures, and Gladstone, too.
Wilsonville Urban Renewal.
Yeah, Wilsonville Urban Renewal. But, but Gladstone, congratulations. A long, many years' struggle has really ended in success. So, congratulations there. Finally, code enforcement, you know, it's funny, but over the years, code enforcement is, either is a great thing or a bad thing. It continually floats around. We fund it, we underfund it. Marijuana's going to be a, a big, big challenge. But there are some, some, somebody invited me, and if I have an opportunity to do this, to visit a new facility that uses charcoal filters and fans. And he said that you can walk right up to the marijuana and put your nose in it, you can't smell it, because of the filtration. And that's during blooming, which, until recently, I had no idea that that's what people actually smoked was the buds. But we've learned so much. We started out pretty ignorant about this whole thing, and really made an effort to become educated. And, and boy, are we learning it from both sides. A lot of folks reaching out to us. So, have a great weekend, and I have the opportunity again to talk about a dog we have in our shelter. Name is Oli. He's an easygoing senior citizen. I assume he's on social security, seeking a home for his retirement years. He walks politely on his leash. He sits when asked and takes treats gently. He's devoted, affectionate, and attentive, and is eager to find a great home. So, if you're interested in visiting our furry friend, please visit Clackamas County's Dog Services Center, or call five oh three, five, six five five, eight six two eight, or visit us on the web at W W W dot Clackamas dot U S forward slash dog. So, Oli, I hope you're successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it was mentioned about Pico Astronomics. That was really an interesting tour, their warehouse and how they assemble things. One of the key things they do for Boeing is their oxygen masks. So, we got to talking about those oxygen masks. You know, you think there's this huge tube up there that's going to feed you oxygen. It ain't true. It's a very small one that generates oxygen for a very limited period of time, when, you know, right now, if you, you fly in a commercial airline, they, they're pressurizing the cabin like you're at six or seven thousand feet, when you're actually at twenty or thirty thousand square feet, uh, feet in elevation. And then, what happens is, when those masks pop down, what happens is, certainly you want to put, put it on yourself first, and then the child. How many times we've been told that? But after that, what the pilot will likely do is go into a steep dive, because they want to get down to where you're actually six or seven thousand feet. So, you don't have to wear that mask at that time. So, interesting how they put that all together, a very interesting process. I did go to a three-chair lunch. I met with Deborah Cifori, the Chair of Multnomah County, and Andy Dyke, the Chair of Washington County. We do that regularly, to talk about the legislature, talk about some advancements that we all agree in, and certainly, talk about some things we don't agree about. The Paracord Wine, Wine Reception was mentioned. This next week, on Friday, actually, excuse me, that's tomorrow, the home builders are having their two thousand sixteen housing forecast. Now, the home builders have been at odds with Metro about the growth of, of our region, and especially when Metro says that in twenty years, sixty-seven percent of the people will not only be living in multifamily, but they're going to be liking it, too. I kind of doubt that. This, this Saturday, there's a Gladstone Veterans Breakfast, which I'll be volunteer for, and there's a, there's a Veterans Parade, which is going to be fun, too. This Saturday night will be the Clackamas Community College Fiftieth Anniversary Gala, one of my alma maters, so I'm really going to be looking forward to that celebration. The Estacada Chamber is having a Veterans Breakfast on Saturday, as well as the Veterans' Key to Success Awards, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Three Rivers Open House. The things that we did this week, one was mentioned, and that was citing the Oregon State University Agriculture Extension Service site here on campus. Still a lot more paperwork to do in that, and a lot of, of decisions that have to be affirmed. We had an update on Easton Ridge. Easton Ridge is where we remodeled rather a derelict set of apartments. I think there's two hundred and sixty-four in there. I have been there, and they've done a fantastic job. It was very costly. Frankly, I voted against it when this came up, but what a great product they came out with. We also, you know, the Twolton River is a meandering thing. It used to flood a lot more than it does currently. But as it passes from West Lynn up into the Lake Oswego area, we inherited through a lot of different processes, including foreclosure, a narrow strip. And it is called the difference between the ordinary low watermark and the ordinary high watermark. There have been people and families that lived along, along that river for decades, literally fifty, sixty years, who've had their little dock in there, and were allowed to, to have that on that river. It's not, they're not big docks, by the way. But fairly recently, the last couple of years, the county's been citing those people and saying that they don't have the right to be on that river because of that narrow strip. And now, we've decided we will give easements to those people, so that they can rightfully, and into perpetuity, be allowed to walk over that very narrow area in order to get to a dock that they have permitted on the river. So, that was a, a good decision. You know, Metro, in, in two thousand nine, the Port of Portland wrote a rather lengthy letter to Metro saying, you are short on industrial job-producing lands in this region, and specifically Clackamas County. Metro ignored that. Since at least two thousand eight, the Coalition for a Prosperous Region has been telling Metro, you're short on job-producing lands, and you're significantly behind like-kind sized regions throughout this nation. Metro has ignored that. Then recently, the regional mayors put out a piece about Metro's decision to, again, not to expand the urban growth boundary. Now, they've waited for six years, and they, they've made another decision to wait another three years. Why is it that, when we also say the same thing, that we are wrong, too? According to Metro, the only people can do something right is them. And so, it's not just this maverick Clackamas County, and there was a meeting here recently this week where Counselor Carlotta Colette condemned the county, and said, we're mavericks, and we're out of touch with reality. This urban rural map is six years old. That's aged in planning. But yet, Metro says, everything's fine. We went through a process. You can't recreate the wheel. I say that Metro is wrong, that they're behind, and they got to catch up. They cannot continue to say that their partners, they call us, I don't know why they call us that, it's more like under-the-thum people, that our partners are all wrong, and we're the ones that are right. We intend to go to the legislature and ask for subregional planning, because it doesn't make any difference whether there's industrial property in Forest Grove, and so, we can't have any. And what makes the difference is, we should have that here in this county. On one hand, Metro says, you shouldn't commute. You should live near where you work. Well, some people don't want to. Is that a right they have? Yes, it is. So, we will ask for subregional planning, so that they can address Goal Nine and other goals, and, and, and address our particular needs as we have demonstrated and can prove them. I'm getting a little tired of Metro condemning Clackamas County for being so outlandish, when that, those august groups and individuals continue to say that for a period of many years. So, I think Metro's going to turn around their, their thinking, and I wish them the best on that. You know, I, I wanted to read one last thing that I, I really do like, it was also on that same sheet Mary gave me, but is, you can think what you will about former President Ronald Reagan, and I think a great deal of him, but this quote was one of his best. "Freedom is a fragile thing, and is never more than one generation away from extinction. It is not ours by inheritance. It must be fought for and defended constantly by each generation. For it comes only once to a people. Those who have known freedom and then lost it have never known it again." Every year on November eleventh, we as Americans take the time to recognize the heroes among us. They are the brave men and women who served in our armed forces. They are the veterans of the United States Military. And ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn our meeting today in honor of those heroes.